All right, I got right at four thirty. We'll call to order the meeting of the Pittsman County Board of Supervisors. Work session Tuesday, November twentieth, twenty eighteen, four thirty P.M. In the main conference room of the county administrative building, Monteson Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barbara, Mr. Blackstock.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. And for the record, Mr. Barbara indicated that you could run a few minutes later. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, it might be appropriate to add as a separate item, or if you'd like to incorporate under other reports, a staff report we received by email today regarding two slight modifications to the solid waste building logistics. Would you like to make a motion?
The light, or you want to put it in?
Other reports.
On this motion, we add the discussion of a memo that was assimilated this afternoon concerning solid waste fees.
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion on motion.
There's a motion.
Mr. Scares, second.
As soon as I can push that through.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Scares. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Please record the votes. Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So may.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion on motion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. We've done the presentation. We have any Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Staff committee reports. We've done the lease revenue bonds update. Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes, I just wanted to give you all a brief update on our master lease financing program. If you'll remember, we entered into a lease back in January. We closed on January the thirtieth, and we had two pieces of this. We did do this through our industrial development authority, and I had the privilege of meeting with them last Tuesday evening to give them this same report. So just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of what's going on with that lease and where we stand with that. So we had a tax exempt piece of the bond, and that was to provide landfill equipment, a chiller for our courthouse, and to purchase the Mount Herman Library branch and do renovations there. So you should have a copy of that. The first page shows equipment descriptions that we provided the bank that we were going to use funds for. The second piece of this was a taxable bond, and that was for economic development needs, most of which were to purchase and upfit a twelve thousand square foot building that was located in Ringgold, Virginia. The second part of that was for some local match to a grant. That actually has expired as far as being able to draw down those funds at this time. They allowed us to draw on those funds until March. And right now, we do not have that need, but if the need arises, we can certainly take that back to the bank. That is still available to us. The second page shows actually the expenditures that occurred, or have occurred so far. Our library project is currently finished. We allocated a total of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of these funds for that project. The actual library costs that came out of these funds were five hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-six, thirty-six. So we had a remaining balance of seventy-six, three thirty-three, sixty-four, which the intention is you can use these funds for other items that were identified in the original equipment description to the bank. So because we have finalized the library and the chiller, the leftover funds can be rolled over to the landfill equipment. So that's what we are proposing to do. The chiller came in under budget as well, so we have eighty-seven thousand dollars there that will remain, which also we are anticipating that to be used for landfill equipment as well. So we have made several purchases that are listed on your report there. We have bought a D six N bulldozer, a pan scraper, and right now, we have a grappler truck that's on order and a roll-off truck that are on order. So we have total expenditures or encumbered amounts totaling seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four thirty-five, and the amount originally allocated was eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so right now, we have a total of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that are remaining of these tax exempt bonds that can be used for the purchase of landfill equipment, and that can be anything for landfill. But our anticipated use of these funds would be for convenience sites, whether it be compactors or what have you. Under economic development needs, you can see that we did purchase that twelve thousand square foot industrial facility, building that Panacea went into and occupied at a total cost of nine hundred and six thousand, four sixty-three. We have received costs from Blair of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four fifty-five of upfit costs. Our only obligation to Panacea was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So just so you all know, because these are taxable bonds and because the I D A is listed as the landlord, these funds are now located in the I D A coffers. So everything that's left is with them. So all of the bills that we get for upfit costs will actually go to the I D A secretary. She'll be responsible for making those payments. And when we start receiving rent payments from Panacea, they get ten months free, and then once those rent payments start coming in, they'll also flow through the I D A. And so I have checked with our auditors, and they felt that that was the best way to handle those accounting transactions that are going on there. So we have provided the I D A with the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we are obligated to pay for upfit costs, and so they are ready when those bills start flowing through. Does anyone have any questions about what's going on with those?
Questions from the board?
Just one. Two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars has been rolled over to the landfill use. Before we allocate that, it will be brought back to the board so we can...
Most likely, yes, most likely by way of property acquisition or approval. I'm talking about with the board to approve episodes, especially if it's real property.
And we'll let you know if we are going to use these funds for that purpose. And these reports are being provided to you as well as to the I D A because I did contact our Chris Polk with Hunt and Wigan to verify that this was an appropriate use of funds and that we could do that based on the bond documents. And he just said that he wanted me to make sure that you all were aware of what was going on, the intentions, and that the bank would be totally fine with that as long as it was used for something that was identified in the original document.
The restrictions, longer than nature restrictions.
And we broke that language so loosely on landfill. We did not identify specifically what those funds were going to be used for. It just had to be landfill equipment.
But my question, I can return back to what your regional statement was. I want to make sure it's clear that the board will have to approve the spending of these two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Would they not follow up on Mr. Blackstock's question? Would they not follow the same parameter that, I mean, if it passes a certain threshold, we have to approve their...
That's right, but I should make sure we all...
On the same thing, yeah. Second question I have about it is just more for the public. We will be retiring bond debts, I'm assuming, using solid waste fee funds?
Yes.
The portion that is for the landfill?
The portion that goes to the landfill has already been moved. That's the debt, and the other thing has been moved to the landfill.
Just think it's interesting for the public to know that's where this one is coming from.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we're moving to six B. General discussion of solid waste and other code violations. Mr. Sack.
Yes, just by way of introduction, I guess, we talk of solid waste. This is not the solid waste that you hear about every day right now with compacts and convenience sites. This is more trash yard type violations of solid waste ordinance. And other code violations, we want to talk a little bit about dangerous structures, dilapidated structures, that kind of thing. The general discussion part is we're not going to fix any problems or resolve anything today. This is just kind of a conversation, let you know a little bit about the process and start the conversation. I expect that it would lead to further discussion, that if we want to change any of our ordinances, if we want to height our maintenance codes, and all of that would likely run through the legislative committee. So again, this is, we could spend a day at least on this problem, but we're just going to spend a few minutes giving an overview. And I have with me tonight Karen Hayes, who's a deputy director of community development, and Mike Henderson, who is our building official. They are the boots on the ground, the people that have to deal with these problems every day, and so they're here if we get any questions that we want to talk with them about. Just to kind of start the conversation, I know that you all get a lot of complaints from folks, and I'll go ahead and say it so you won't have to say it. Everything takes too long. The process of government is far slower than it should be. But we get complaints like this particular one, it's located on Market Drive, where people complain about a fire damaged house. And some of the challenges are, most of these dilapidated, abandoned, fallen down type structures, it's hard to reach owners, there's people that are out of town, nobody's claiming this, but nobody wants to accept responsibility. So there was a battle back and forth quite a bit on this particular project. This is our process, is that when we receive a complaint, our building official and director of community development send a letter out explaining what the violations are and indicate what needs to be fixed to bring it into compliance, and notifies on that, you know, they have a certain period of time to do that. And it also stipulates the penalty that's involved. And again, of course, Mr. Hunt gets involved in this, so welcome him to jump in any time as well. One of the things that we need to keep in mind, I think, is we have in our chapter four building code, the definitions and descriptions of what a dangerous structure is. And if it's declared to be a dangerous structure, we need to keep in mind that one of the options is to repair, remove, or secure the building. So we can't automatically go in every time it's a bad looking property and say, this has to be torn down. There is an option that they can secure the building, board up the windows and doors, and they would need to build it better, even though it would still look terrible. And a house like this one here with the roof falling in, this is clearly a danger, a dangerous structure, and not easily repaired. So in this case, after a great deal of effort, Ms. Hayes finally caught up with the right people and got that property cleaned up. So that's one that has been taken care of. There's another property that's on U.S. Highway twenty-nine, fairly close to the city of Danville. Doesn't look anything like it. I know. I told Karen, I said, it looks really good in that picture, but it is much worse over time. And again, the process of letters back and forth, this is, you know, there's family involved, there's estates involved. Nobody wants to step up because then they assume responsibility. Ms. Hayes has been in contact with these folks, said that if you don't fix it, the county will be forced to go in, tear the property down, place a lien against the property. And finally, I think it's in our folder, that she's been contacted by the property owner saying that they have exhausted all the efforts on their part, and that they are open to the county going in and removing the house and placing a lien against the property. So we have gotten some bids. This is the letter that went out citing the violations. We've gotten some bids on that property. It involves some cooperation from the county and the landfill in that the contractor's saying, I can tear the building down, but I'd like to have the county supply boxes there on the site that we can take the debris, put it right in the building, and have the county take it to the landfill. Of course, that would also involve, you know, some time and effort on behalf of the county. So we're going to bring back a formal proposal at the next meeting, outline what's exactly involved with the landfill operation and what the contractor cost would be. And at that point, and again, we're speaking of generalities, in all of these cases, at some point, it's going to end up right here before the board saying, to fix it, it's going to cost this amount of money. We expect to be in that position next month on this case. All right, then there's another type of complaint that we deal with, and this one is chapter seventeen, which is the solid waste ordinance. This is not really directly under the community development and building code. It's a separate code in the county, and we may start involving our solid waste assistance team just because we have some staff now that we haven't had in the past. But right now, it falls again on Ms. Hayes and community development office. But we're seeing complaints like this. This is a project on twenty-five oh one Mount Cross Road, and it is an extreme situation. There's a house back off of the road on Mount Cross Road, and if you see on this direction, if you're going north on Mount Cross, there's a pretty nice maintained fence that looks pretty good, or not bad, I'd say. But on the other side, going south, let's see if I got a picture in that direction. That's really that side. You're going south towards Danville, there's no fence on that side. You see some of the debris and the trees. And then as you go in a little closer, you can see just, that's the bamboo that folks might see driving along Mount Cross Road. This is a pretty extreme case, and this project has a long history where in a prior director of community development or code appliance, there were several court proceedings. Since Mrs. Hayes has inherited the job, she's been to court. We've cited the person for violations of solid waste ordinance. It's gone to court. He's been found guilty. He's appealed it. If I haven't missed any steps, can you jump in? But it's been appealed, it's been cited, it looks like it's just not going to be successfully resolved going through the route of dealing with the property owner. But again, these are pictures that Mrs. Hayes has gotten, oftentimes having to get a deputy to escort her onto the property because this, even though it's a mess, there is a resident on that property. There's a house on that property that at this time has not been declared to be a dangerous structure. The house is one thing. This is the solid waste in the yard. So the person refuses access to county staff, so, and I don't know if there's any danger or not, but we asked Karen to call a deputy, she has to go over onto the property. Let's go back to this. So on that one, we have, there's several issues to deal with, and again, we've been working pretty closely with Mr. Hunt. The only case that we have knowledge of in recent history that the county has gone in and cleaned up a project like that was there was a Mr. Gilmore Gammon quite a few years ago that was living in a car in front of a house, and the property was that junky. In that case, the house, the yard, everything was a disaster. The county used our solid waste equipment and our crews in the landfill and went in and bore those entire property. Every single thing on there was taken off all to the landfill. And in that case, we had to get a court order to remove the person. The deputies had to take the person off the property and put him in jail, and we had a court order to go in there and clean up the property. We are going the court route. Like I say, it doesn't seem like that's going to work. One of the challenges on this particular property is the waste is intertwined with the trees, it's all overgrown, the house itself is not a problem, but there's several very mature trees on the property. So we've got to go in there and get contractors on the site in order to get an estimate of the cost to clean up the property. And when you've got hostile property owner, that's a challenge. We have passed the Department of Social Services to go out there and check on the person as well as check, and they have done it actually numerous times, I think, in the past, and they've refused access. The person won't let them on the property. On either side of the property are family members, and they are not participating or complaining. They are not actively complaining to us, so that's a challenge as well. So in our discussions, what we proposed is that we would like to issue a request for qualifications to qualify contractors that would be willing to go in and clean up debris like this, where you've got to work around trees, you've got to clean up the debris, but not damage the property. Another one of the challenges, Ms. Hayes says, when she's been on property in the past, there's terrible trash and garbage right next to good personal property. I mean, there's some valuable property in there, and we have to be very careful about what we're doing, what we don't. So if we right now said, we'll take contractors out there to get bids, well, it's going to be a challenge to get ten contractors to wander around that mess to come up with an offer. So we're looking to pre-qualify, issue an R F Q, who's qualified, who's got the equipment. We narrow that down to say two or three qualified contractors. And then we can get a court order, which Ms. Hayes is already working on a court order right now with Mr. Hunt's help. And that would allow us to say, okay, on such and such a date, we're going to have three contractors out there, and they're going to walk around, they're going to see what the situation is, and then they just come back and give us an estimate of what it would cost. That's what we were bringing to this board. Right now, we don't know if it's ten thousand dollars or a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We haven't actually been on the property real recently since she took these pictures. So that's kind of where we stand. Again, I apologize if everything takes too long. We hear your complaints, we understand that you're getting pounded on by citizens, and we are trying to move a little bit quicker. We have a group now consisting of the building official, community development, myself, Mr. Hicks, and Mr. Hunt, and we meet regularly to talk about where we stand on these complaints and what the next step is to make sure they don't fall between cracks. That's the general overview. I'd like to say this could lead to a lot more meetings, a lot more discussions, but we just want to give you an idea of what's involved in the process. So I hesitantly opened the door.
Just maybe a suggestion, maybe we'll get in the court and see if the judge would order him to remove any property from the yard that is valuable. The judge would probably give him ten days or thirty days to remove any valuable property from the yard, and then when you took your vendors out there that were contractors, they would know exactly what had to be cleaned up to the picking floor. Because it would be almost impossible for the county or government staff to go out there and determine what's valuable and what's not. In that person's eyes, everything in the yard is valuable. That's a good point. We'll do that.
Mr. Scares. Good idea, Mr. Blackstock.
Senator, all three of these properties are in my district. I just want to thank the staff. I know it's been a long process, but I appreciate the effort, and I have been getting beat up on all three of these properties, and I do keep an eye out on them, so it's good to see that we're making some progress, especially Martin Road, that one was terrible. The one on twenty-nine that was imploding completely, I mean, it's certainly a danger for anyone in the neighborhood, so that one, as soon as you guys can get that one figured out.
Greg, your intent is to bring that back to the board for approval.
That's right.
We have a bid somewhere in the twenty-five hundred dollar range, right?
Right. It's not a big number.
Because we're supplying the boxes and waiving the tip and fees.
Right. We'll probably get some specific information from Mr. Hicks about what's involved on our side, but that'll be back at the next meeting.
Mr. Blackstock.
I've had several properties in my district that we've worked on in the past, and the result was not with the neighbors or whatever. But because of the way the code's written, currently, we didn't have a lot of bite. And an example would be, somebody has a mobile home park and has multiple mobile homes, and a lot of them get real old and they quit using. They can bore those things up and just leave them in the park itself. So you've got children playing in the mobile home park, and you've got mobile homes that they nail a board across the front door and say, it's nailed up, nobody can get in. You've got vines growing up, throwing up, everything else. I think we need to take a look at some of those codes and revise.
And we have a legislative committee meeting, is it the twenty-ninth of this month? And on the agenda, we're going to ask the legislative committee if they have any appetite to maybe give us some bite. Along with that bite, just know that it's going to take, there's going to be some administrative costs, there's going to be some staffing costs, and in a rural community such as us, if we go to the grass and weed ordinance, if we do adopt the second part of the property maintenance code, it's going to be a brave new world out there. And just know that we're working through this.
Well, I'd say, easy if we don't go that far as far as the new ordinance. The definition of a dangerous structure is pretty broad. It does indicate you could repair or stabilize, but also it does say it will remove. We've got fairly new leadership in community development and our building official both, so I think we will scrutinize cases differently now, and you ask to say, yes, it's been boarded up, but could still be considered a danger to the community.
Well, I'm going to agree one hundred percent with what Mr. Blackstock just said. You know, I think we owe it to the citizens that own homes in R one to help protect them to some degree. I understand too what Vaden's saying, that may cost us something, but I think it's costing us dearly. When you have a situation like we have on Mount Cross Road, it's devaluing all the surrounding property, which is hurting our tax base. So you've got to keep in mind, if you do this, yes, it may cost you something, but what is it going to mean to you on property values being increased? And I do agree with Vaden on the respect that we've got to remember that we're a rural community, and, you know, A one is different than R one, but if you look at our code, there are not a lot of differences in some of the R one rules and some of the agricultural stipulations. So I think we owe it to it. Pittsman County is changing. We can understand that and agree to that or not, but Pittsman County is changing and progressing, and if we want to continue the offer of quality housing that attracts these industries that are now looking at us and all, they're going to need to know they're protected. I don't want to spend, if I'm moving in here, I don't want to spend two or three hundred thousand dollars on a home with no protection that, you know, my neighbor maybe have, you know, three junk cars that haven't had a tag in three years sitting out in front of his house. I mean, those are the things that, so I agree wholeheartedly with Blackstock, certainly on the safety issues with those trailers that you mentioned. So that's my two cents worth there.
Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the real estate is concerned, in my opinion, the trailers I can understand if they're dilapidated, you bore them up or whatever, somebody want to use them for storage, depending. But as far as the property is concerned, it's got houses on them. It may be found to be a problem as far as safety factors are concerned. In my opinion, I think what, if you've got a property that looks like it's somewhat approachable and may be able to be repaired, and the individual doesn't want to do that, and then the confiscation of the property is concerned, I think you're going to have more of a value if that individual is left that bids on the property to come in and fix that property up, and they still got a structure to deal with instead of having to deal with it from the ground up. You see what I'm saying? So I'm just wondering if we ought to have, consider some more dialogue or verbiage there, if you please, on instead of wiping the whole property clean unless the individual wants it. I think it ought to be an option there for a person if we had to confiscate the property because they're not doing, you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
In other words, if I want to go in and I say, oh, I want to bid on this house, it's county had to get it because they're not going to take care of it, and it was taken from them, make it, I'm told I'm too abstract. All right, I want a structure. I want that structure right there because I can use that structure. I don't want it to, I don't want it tore down. I want to use that because I can go back and ball better dress it up and don't have to spend as much for the foundation. You see what I'm saying? I think we ought to have a little more leeway there. You understand what I'm saying, county administrator?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Basically, if it's still...
I'm just saying, give us a little more option. That way, we still got, we still got base as far as taxes are concerned on that property. Because you've got more tax base on it when you've got a house on it than you do when it's just cleaned up. Yes, sir. Mr. Blackstock. I guess I just want, because this is a pet peeve of mine, but...
I guess I just want, because this is a pet peeve of mine, but I think, Mr. Davis, what you're saying is, if the guy didn't keep the property up, any property was seized and sold?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You're saying after it's seized and sold, then sort of turn it down, it might be smarter to repair it.
Right. That way you don't have to spend the money from the county's aspect and they can say, all right, you know, we can put some writing in there and say, okay, if we take it down, it's going to cost either way. I'm just saying, the idea is that if I'm a property owner, or I'm purchasing property for rental, or I'm fixer-upper, I would rather have the structure, if the structure is found is sustainable, that way I don't have to go back from the ground up. I can use what I've got there because I've seen that, that's happened, I did that. And it's a whole lot, to me, it's, you haven't destroyed the house and as I said, you still have maintained the tax value on it for right.
Two things that I want.
I'm just starting to...
Greg, initially, we're not seizing any property. We're just putting a lien on the property for whatever the cleanup cost is, so we wouldn't be taking any property unless they got so far behind in their liability, tax liability.
That is correct.
And in season.
That's what I'm saying.
But the second thing is, Vaden mentioned, and I just want clarity so the public understands this, when you talk about waiving fees, we're not waiving the fee, we're waiving the fee so the guy that destroys or cleans up the property doesn't have to pay it. We're still putting it on the assessment of what it cost us to put it against the property.
Our code and the state code says that after reasonable notice and they failed to clean something up, we can go in there and ameliorate the situation. I have a form, it's a lien. After that happens, we tally up all of our administrative costs, our people costs, our tipping fees, and we put it on lien form, I take it to certain court, and I put it to record against that property. So it's the long game. When that property is sold, we eat first in the pecking order of the liens. And so when that thing is sold eventually, whether it's a tax sale or whether they sell the property, they're heirs to, we're going to get paid out, assuming our lien is less than the value of the property. So we will get our money back, but it's a long game.
Well, I think just to be fully open on that, we need to also acknowledge that a lot of times, this is, these are pretty poor properties. When you get that lien and you get your money back, what you get in the end may not be much of much value, but it's still indecent.
Well, two pieces we're talking about today wouldn't fall into that category. The one on 29 and the one for Mount Cross, that puts a lot of good property.
Scariest thing about the Mount Cross houses inside all the, that's a nice brick home back there.
Yeah.
And it's just interesting.
Mr. Barbara has a question.
I just wanted to clarify that, you kind of pretty much clarified it. If we went in, got to the point, we went in and actually cleaned the property, or destroyed, took down the dilapidated fibered dangerous structure, we don't actually take possession of the property, we put a lien on the property for our cost.
Correct.
Then it would have to actually be sold at auction, is that correct? Unless they sold it themselves, we couldn't actually go and claim a property.
We don't, we don't claim it.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Right. We do everything in our power to make sure that the private person pays for it first.
And of course, that's worst case scenario, I know that too. I don't know that this happens very often.
And some of the properties that could happen is if they're as bad as Greg just described, if we put a lien on it and if that's bad, they're probably not going to pay their taxes. So at some point in time, Shirley's going to declare it to be sold. Get the tax collapse, harvest our benefits.
And it would be first in line.
Yeah, it'd be first in line.
To recover our property.
The other, the other thing that we can keep in mind is this, if we go in and clean the property off, just level it off, clean it up, before they can build any new structure on it, they've got to get a building from there. We need to make sure that we have the ability to restrict building on that site that will be paid. So we need to remember that, Vaden.
And my understanding is, this is going to legislative committee, so we'll have a chance to really digest this later. Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you, Greg. We're down to 5C, possible revision of Pittsman County Code, Chapter 35. Very excited.
Yes, this is a little bit of a courtesy notice that you might have been aware that the planning commission at the Public hearing just recently on making an addition to their ordinance to cover these group homes that is called residential addiction treatment group home. And the definition for that that will be added to our zoning ordinance is a residential group home for the treatment of recovery, drug, and alcohol addictions. We had a situation where someone came into the county that does this type of work in other parts of the country, including Henry County, and they wanted to locate a facility in Pittsman County and there is no such allowance in our zoning ordinance. So the planning commission was open to making this allowable in our zoning ordinance as a special use permit, meaning that they would have to go to the planning commission and then they'd have to go to the board of zoning appeals and have conditions placed on it. So it's not will and nearly allowed in any locality, in any district, but it enables it to be done. And I'll say the planning commission was very open to this type of treatment and they acknowledged the need for drug addiction and alcohol treatment in our modern society. So the planning commission has approved it and recommended it to the board supervisors. It will show up at your next board supervisor's meeting as a public hearing to get your approval to change the zoning ordinance.
We've got a group home, Greg, on 41. How did that get...
There is a group home situation for developmentally disabled and for some other uses, but not for addiction treatment.
A religious-based organization wants to open up a drug addiction facility for women in Pittsman County where judges can take offenders that are going on parole, put them in on as a halfway house type situation. And he had a very impressive presentation at the Board of the Planning Commission and we just didn't have a place to allow this in our zoning ordinance, so that's why we're asking to amend it. Of course, since it's an intensive use, it will be a special use that the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals can put proffers and conditions on it. But there was just no allowance under our current definition to allow substance abuse addiction type home. It's contemplated religious outfit wants to do it for women, the first one, we think.
Greg, yes.
Any questions, people?
It's the commune. So, you know, the first one may be our religious group, but it's people that actually run these things for profit. And it's going to be citizens who do not want these in residential neighborhoods.
Oh, yeah? I agree. When the one on 41 opened for intellectually disabled, the mindset was it was for what we were talking about then and the public was only bad. But after they found out, and it's been a great addition because they built a million dollar facility and increased property values of everybody around them.
I want to make it clear, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to these types because we do need it, but this is appropriate place to locate it.
And that's why it's not appropriate to be a huge fine line, but the special use gives the neighbor the opportunity to speak up. And when they first targeted their location, there was no neighbor opposition for that particular site. And I think since then, they've lost that sight. But still, there's some cases where they have a little opposition, maybe targeted it, it's not the wrong word.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm aware. I moved to 6D, Convenience Center, pilot site, Mr. Hicks.
You know, we got started a pilot, we have five, three centers. We currently have three sites manned, we're closing the gates at 9:00 PM until 7:00 AM. We're close to staffing layer sites and a Mount Cross site.
Senior package for you.
This just adds about six more days to your numbers here, so it's, you know, an update on what you've got in the past few days. The sites are open from 7 to 9. I think y'all had some questions about what are the right hours. Since that site opened, I've been from 7 to 8 PM, I've been, you know, the number of cars, we check those daily. And we also did it from 8 to 9. And after we had some more discussions about is the 7 to 9 proper, or should it be 6:30 to 8:30 or 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, we started looking at the hours from 8 PM to 8:30 and from 8:30 to 9. If you notice in that last hour, you know, there's not many visitors to the site. There's an average of one or two or zero on some days. You know, so that final hour is not that busy. One thing we have, with that, you know, this, the pilot program was supposed to last until the end of the year. So I think one option maybe is, we want to just keep going on the yard and I will bring you back several recommendations. A second option you could consider, I guess, is the Roswell site. Since I do have a camera there, I can count the cars every day easily. If you wanted to, you know, to shift that site from say 6:30 to 8:30, we can see if there are more people that would be interested in that 6:30 to 7:00 AM time. And the third option we gave that, time you could, you know, change the hours, and I'm always at 5:00, 5:00. And I think the sites are going to be different. I'm not sure that 7 to 9 is going to work for each individual. Sites, you may have some that are, you know, are better served in the morning, some may have later people coming in at night, so.
I definitely think we need to look at the front end. Earlier, I actually talked to somebody in your district, they, but he wanted 5 o'clock. I said, I don't know if that's possible because I don't think you get that much. Definitely they need to be 6, 6:30. We talked about, actually, both the people calling about it in your district are probably people on what it works. Yeah. A lot of people said, you know, we have to be at work at 7, we need to stop by on the way out. So I think the front end, we definitely, again, we could probably adjust it back in when it needs to be.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I've had complaints, you know, morning at 6 o'clock, and they're, these were not in my district, these are other districts. I think they were in your district, matter of fact. So some places, I think, if you've got a heavy traffic in there early in the morning...
I want to be clear for the public, the Mount Herman site actually sits on the board of the Westover District and the Chatham Blas District. So that's also Mr. Skars.
She might have a point about those people.
They shouldn't point, I'm not boss.
I would agree, unless Mr. Skars can say different, Mr. Hicks. You know, because you don't have any cameras up in Mount Herman, I would like to follow the same hours that Roswell's following. That's the feedback I'm getting. Personally, I think 6 to 8 works better for the people in that community from what I'm hearing versus 7 to 9. There's a lot of people that have jobs that start at 7, so they want to, like Mr. Blackstock said, Mr. Davis said, on the way to work, they want to be able to stop the property trash.
Maybe the summertime, we could add hour afternoons. I know it was a lot heavier until it got later in the season.
Are you guys still keeping stats on the amount of tiny chitter coming into those states?
We have a good pile of them.
So I wonder if you get a chance to get that, I'd like to see those numbers.
And Mr. Barbara, I think now that they, you know, know what our hours are, it's kind of evening out too. I mean, some might maybe be scared they won't get there and the gates are still, now you know what your hours are.
One of the other questions I have about that, Mount Herman site, that's a heavily used site, is we got the gates set deep into that facility. We got an old gate out front. One of the, I heard several citizens say, you know, if we make the mistake and turn in and it's closed, it's pretty difficult to get out and down in there. So we may want to close both of those gates so they can't make that move.
I told our site attendant to close both gates.
Okay, thank you.
So Jim driving there, you got to turn around and back out.
Yeah, because it's pretty difficult to turn around in there and get in between those gates.
I was just thinking the same thing too. I don't know why, I told David, first time I've been up there, it was full. The compactor was completely, they had it stacked because the box was full, the compactor said it don't know how long we went to deal with it. They put holiday, they want to mail it.
I might say 90% of people get sprayed to the compactor.
Which is scary. Learn what we're asking.
I just hadn't seen it, like it was, it's cold, it's...
We had a heavy weekend at some other sites also, including our two big green box sites that were storing layer construction. They did get dealt quickly, we also talked about Thanksgiving hours this weekend. They will be, you know, we expect plenty of business Friday and we will be out there collecting.
I'm like, Mr. Barbara, I know we've had this discussion, we always going to get killed on Christmas, so we need to be prepared for it. I know we're not, we don't have people that are collecting on Christmas Day, but we might want to put out some extra boxes that we can, into places that'll handle, so we don't have as much problem.
Well, also, so we discussed this issue 45, 60 days ago and it's on our whiteboard at the conference room, it says, "Win Christmas." Me and Greg and Richard, and we're all going to be out there winning Christmas. We know that's, that's a big time for people to see a difference in our system and we're going to show them.
Shuck five trucks and what? We're not dropping a truck.
Get them a Santa's sake.
All in here.
But I'm not a shuttle and rake.
Like an elf suit.
They exempted boys from that.
Yeah, I just want to video it.
It'll be on tape.
Any other questions for Mr. Hicks about the convenience center? Okay? And then move on. Legislative priorities, Mr. Smithman?
Yes, sir. We have been talking internally about several items that we would, that we need Richmond to pay attention to, and they're listed here on, this is item 6E in your packet. We plan on bringing these to the legislative committee and talking about developing a list of priorities as we go into the general assembly session. We have also talked in the past about, or not in the past, internally, we've talked about, is there somebody in Richmond that we can get to advocate for us on some of these issues? The city of Damboll has a representative on retainer in Richmond to help with some of their bigger lifts that they're trying to do with the general assembly. We've got a couple of big lifts up here, particularly Connector Road for the Mega Park, which is also a damage concern, as well as the Cherrystone Lake matter. Both of these are multi, multi, multimillion dollar projects that we think Richmond will have to be involved in to make happen in local. So we wanted to bring this up for you just as a conversation, things that you think we need to be pushing on, things that you would like the legislative committee to consider what they need, and just get general feedback on your ideas of these legislative priorities. Legislative committee, you know, session two. I don't have a question.
This is not short, this is long. Session's long. Every other year it's short.
Yeah, you have a short and a long.
Yeah.
I haven't looked.
Comments from the board, questions from the board? I guess we're going to discuss this more with the legislative committee.
Yes, sir.
There's some partners that we need to look at. Number nine, convoy funding. Convoy funding covers all your constitutional offices. You can go and ride along with the Indian Sheriff's Association, they always look at provisional funding for their positions. They're the most powerful, dominant group in the state of the county. So if you want to contact people like that, also they could...
So, you know, if we can, and it may be that these are the only nine, we don't want to put them there, but once we identify those items, we want to start developing distractions. And that's exactly what you're saying, I've been involved.
I've been involved with this before, here at the old places. Also, you may have specifics to Pittsman County that you want, I confirm the lobbying, will they have them specifically for those purposes?
Yep, yep.
That nobody else is going to go ride with you on. But sometimes it pays to do that if it's, and that Cherry, that Cherrystone Lake project, that's even, it's so expensive.
Yes, sir.
And I, I would say the same thing too on item five. Basbo and the superintendent's have a committee to lobby for them. Dr. Miller's very familiar with those, with Basbo, but they have strong intentions to, to, to latch on to. One thing I'd like to say while we're in this fifth with this category is once it goes into session, you'll get Senate bills and House bills that come out. We need to be probably a little more diligent than I, I know I personally have been in the past, but collectively as staff and as supervisors to, to really review those bills. Because if we don't do anything on them, we got to do it before the cross over. So, you know, let's, let's be diligent that once they go into session, we'll start watching those bills that are coming out to s- to see. Because, you know, there've been several times when localities got caught, they didn't know what was happening and then the boat goes down and it's a whole lot easier to get, uh, to take care of Jeanie when she gets out of the box than it is after she's out of the box. I just, I just ask you to do that. Mr. Davis?
Uh, I have.
That number four right there, someone elaborate a little more on that if you can.
Uh, first, um, meals tax. I think we're capped at six and a half and I think, uh, cities can go to, no, we're capped at four and a half and cities can go to six or six and a half. There are a few discrepancies in what we can do versus what cities can do. And generally, cities have more revenue authority in camps, but it's a true state.
Historically, um, when a lot of these books, these laws about taxation are on the books, they never envisioned that the amount of people, uh, that are currently living in counties would be living in camps. They thought everybody should live in the cities. So they gave them a mo- a ton more leverage to pull to raise revenue by taxation and fees. And, um, as you see the population shift to more counties, counties are frequently asking to be able to tax on the same playing field or raise revenue on the same playing field as towns and cities. Meals tax is an example, there's cigarette tax. I'm, I'm not saying we're going to do this. There's many instances where we are handcuffed because we don't have the statutory authority to do things that cities and towns are allowed to do. And VACO is fault for this, but that's just another example of while, um, we potentially might need to join forces with people, but we would like to be on the same equal footing, have the ability to do, the flexibility to do things that the cities and towns do.
So that's got to go up.
Sure, yep.
Okay. It, it, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that being on the list, but I think it's a good personal opinion. I think it's a fallacy in the system when you think about how condensed most city populations are. You can provide those services a lot cheaper than a county spread out like us. Just even if you look at solid waste, we got to cover a thousand square miles. You know, you look at a place that's got to cover forty square miles. Just transportation cost alone creates, makes that a problem. So, Sheriff, how much easier would it be for you to cover, you know, forty square miles versus a thousand square miles?
Yeah. The point of me is different for law enforcement in the city too. It's a both of them.
Yeah, sorry. Any, any other questions about that for staff? Okay, we'll move to six F, uh, reorganization meeting, Dave.
Yes, sir. We wanted to go ahead and get on your document for our annual reorganization meeting. Would suggest the, uh, holiday is on a Tuesday, January first is on a Tuesday. We would certainly suggest and recommend a regular organization meeting next that week, uh, second, third, or fourth. We just wanted to put that out there for you in the discussion.
Which board is that?
I'm out of town on the fourth.
What, what can we do to, could do, a lot of people take vacation the week, first week of the year. Why can't we take, do it seven?
No reason, to my knowledge. Thank you. Center the better. It's our, I'd be looking, but it's, I don't think there's anything in the code that says a date by which it must occur. I guess.
All right, Monday the seventh is a planning commission meeting. Tuesday eighth is IDA meeting. Wednesday, I don't know of anything, that's the ninth. Thursday. Well, yeah, I doubt anybody wants to be here on Friday, but, uh.
What time is planning and commissioning? Seven?
It's at seven. I mean, nothing says we have to have this at the normal time, but, uh, might be easier for consistency purposes.
Does anything say that we have to have it in corporate?
No, it's just wherever you advertise it.
You can do it here at five o'clock.
We have done it in the past in this building.
We did it this year.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
I got sworn in, right?
That's true.
What about January ninth or tenth? Which one works for you?
I would just say it's the tenth at seven o'clock. Third, that way you, people at work, they'll think.
Church night.
We would have what our first board meeting that following Tuesday.
Um, the sixteenth.
Correct, sixteen.
So I know first one of five in our, um, agenda makers, but.
We're two to the eighth at seven o'clock.
That's fine. We got IDA meeting at six, but that's, that's not going to come through.
They have it in the courtroom?
No.
November eighth, nineteenth, seventeenth?
Yeah, so the, the planning commission's on the eighth. Chief's to the eighth.
Is it usually Monday then?
No, chief.
We can meet on Monday. We don't have to do two.
IDA's at seven?
January seventh. Everybody do it seventh?
I'm not going to speak up because that's my own birthday. And I can tell you it's not a whole lot of market for a ball of heat at that. I got to try to stay there.
Let's get the checkbook out.
I do.
You might ought to come. Is anybody, is everybody available the first Wednesday? Are you in town the first Wednesday?
Cause I know.
Ben?
Yep, the second.
Yeah.
I'm in town.
Let's just do the second if everybody's suitable for the second. Mr. Barber, you okay with the second? I mean, I hate meeting on Wednesday night because it's church night for a lot of folks, but.
What's the third, so you want to get on Thursday?
Being that.
I guess the next day.
Friday, I'm out on the third.
Well, we do it good on the third.
We do it on Thursday.
Thursday, the third is looking good.
Yeah, because the day after the first.
Yeah. Thursday to the third, that's what I was thinking was the third. You should.
I'm only out on Friday. Oh, excuse me, out of town on Friday.
Anybody get married on that day? We get it.
I'm up here on the channel on the seventh, we might still be playing. Actually, we're in the bottom.
You tell us soon, we did it to protect you. Okay.
Third and seven.
Third and seven, okay with everybody. Dr. Miller? Mr. Davis?
Yeah, it works. We're going to be in courtroom, jump us to courtroom.
That's fine with me. I mean, we only go, I mean, typically you only do that one thing. I don't care where we'll be for that. Not usually me here on a ten percent. Y'all are good courtroom, you'll come over here.
Be a lot easier over here because you got to go through all the technical checks over there. But do it here, my personal.
It would for you, but they were slimmed down.
Okay, right here? Everybody okay with that? Okay, all right, another problem. Uh, we're down to other reports that were added, uh, on solid waste. Uh, Mr. Smithman?
Everybody, anybody need to help me with this memo? There are two major issues in that. I'm going to give them to the public unless anybody else needs somebody to take over. So we've heard a lot of, um, we've fielded a lot and you have fielded a lot of calls about our solid waste fee in the last few days. Generally, things are going well. Um, and then we do have an unanticipated, um, unanticipated bottleneck down at the inspection department because of the request to be certified as unhappable. We have two hundred and thirty-two, I think, requests. We've completed twenty-nine inspections. But more than any of that, we've heard complaint about the twenty-dollar fee. And we've heard just a few inquiries about the ability to be qualified under the elderly and disabled exemption. I'll start with the second. The elderly and disabled exemption is a provision of the Pennsylvania County Code that is slightly complicated to explain, um, except to say, if you're elderly and impoverished or a veteran and impoverished, and in this definition impoverished means your household income is less than eighteen thousand dollars, you qualify for a reduction of up to three hundred dollars off your real estate bill and a fifty percent reduction in your solid waste fee. Uh, I talked to Shirley Hammack today and the executive team talked about this today. I think we all agree the eighteen thousand dollar threshold seems very low for a household. We feel like that number should be in the low, mid twenties maybe. Shirley mentioned that the three hundred dollar, um, credit or hourly subsidy is also potentially low and we may want to consider changing that. There's nothing this board can do to change this provision in the current calendar year. However, we suggest, by way of this memo, sending this to the legislative committee and having it proposed in December, if, if they think some changes should be made, make those modifications in December so that when we start the new calendar year, we have a new, uh, new parameters for elderly and veteran exemption that will probably raise the number of people that fall into that. The second item is about the fee and what can we do to make it more efficient? If you do and we have an unhappable structure, get it classified as such. Two things that we're recommending. One, we have, and Karen led this little, uh, experiment. You can go online and determine pretty quickly sometimes whether a structure's unhappable. If the roof had been collapsed and it's in our assessor's rolls as a dilapidated structure, it should not be assessed a fee and we don't need to go put our feet on the dirt to find that. So we think there can be a lot of desk review of these requests. However, it's not going to cover them all. There won't be a picture or a picture will be inconclusive and we do need to go out and check. However, after talking to Mr. Barber, Mr. Skates, I think Mr. Blackstock covered this and Barber and I talked to Mr. Warren, who's a member of the solid waste committee. There's a, there's sentiment to, since this is probably a one-time thing. This is the first year and once it gets certified unhappable, it won't have to be done next year. Uh, to go ahead and waive that twenty-dollar fee for anyone that has paid that twenty-dollar fee to date, issue refunds. Also, we want to continue to reinforce that they don't have to scramble to get this done by December twentieth. We got to June twentieth. We want to reinforce that through the media, uh, that there's still time. But it will, it will ease some of the pressure down inspections, give Mike and his crew the opportunity to maybe pick some of these up as they are going by their course of duty instead of really bogging down the works to run through these requests. And hopefully we can reduce a significant number of these requests by doing desktop reviews. So our two recommendations this evening is, and I've put these in bold in the memo and I'll just read them. Staff recommends that exemption requests be granted desk reviewed where possible and then on-site inspection fee be rescinded and refunded. And the second recommendation is that the board refer the elderly and disabled exemption ordinance to the legislative committee for review and adjustment recommendation. We believe that we can satisfy a significant majority of the legitimate complaints, not the ones that just say, "I don't want to pay," but the ones that have legitimate concern. We think the majority of this concern to be satisfied with these two changes or very slight ones.
You can do that as a motion?
I think it would be.
Right, I'll make the motion that we accept.
Certainly.
Well, since, well, since I talked to you today, you were saying something that the trash fee might be able to retro on the trash part of it. Is that not?
For the elderly exemption? I did talk to Shirley about that today. I think it would be two things. One, according to Shirley, the majority of the people that are now asking for that exemption, she thinks do not qualify. And the reason she thinks that is because if they didn't, if they, if they qualify for this exemption, they also qualify for the real estate exemption. And why would people have left three hundred dollars on the table and just be going after the sixty? She thinks the super majority of those that have requested elderly and late exemption in the last month, once they got through the process, she says, is super.
Well, is it possible they don't know if they're already?
Oh, it's possible.
Set up, they don't know they can get a reduction on?
Uh, no, it would automatically, it should automatically adjust.
Should.
It should.
I got one on call back more and ask them that question, did they apply?
If they're already qualified, they automatically get a reduction. That is true.
Mr. Short, Shorter, Shorter is the shorter.
How would that get picked up by your office? I know it comes from Shirley.
It doesn't get, get picked up by office. When she's, when she assessed the solid waste fee, then the people that were already getting the exemption under the elderly disabled, she only assessed them happy at that time.
Okay, so when they apply, they apply at the solid waste?
That's correct.
You got something? Okay, well, let's get to motion. Perfect, Mr. Black.
Cool.
Motion was made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Dr. Miller. I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Blackstock.
I just want to make sure we taking this off, not just for this year.
Yes, sir. We don't think it would be any longer. Twelve days instead. Yeah, once you give it enough. And we catch it, if you retrofit a house to be habitable, we catch it in inspections.
In the building permit process.
And you said that the threshold will be addressed at the legislative meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Ball.
This is something Ms. Hayes may need to inject on, but if she's going to use the desk or the internet, basically, I don't know what site she's going to use, but to look at the, um, where's the time difference was versus? Here we are in November of twenty eighteen, was the last image in November of twenty sixteen?
I asked Ms. Hammack that question today and our assumption was, well, we just finished an assessment. Nothing should be ever twenty-four years old. That was an incorrect assumption. The original, basically it goes back to the first time we hired Wendy, let's say it was, be at least twelve years ago. Let's just say those pictures are probably fourteen years old would be the oldest. And if any changes that were visible, the standard is changes that are visible, visibly detect, they would retake that picture. So we have had pictures between two years and fourteen years old. Um, depends on, so, yeah. And the site is, these are our pictures that are on our G I S that anyone can pull up on their property card. Um, of course, you can use Google Earth to some degree on some of these things. And I think we can go to those links, but at the end of the day, if it's inconclusive, we're going to have to run out there. And we'll advise them and I know Mr. Shorter has advised them, don't pan until we get straight because it's interest-free for the next seven months.
Other question?
And just as an aside, what I learned was when we do reassessment, I'm telling you this time it's true. We're going to be hiring an reass- an assessor. We need to take every single picture and fourteen years is too long.
Mr. Black.
Just, uh, I've got numerous calls, um, and I live in a rural, my district rural. We have a lot of, um, houses you, I have, that people lived in years ago but have been, no one's lived in them for years, these old farmhouse. And the public is very irate about having to pay twenty bucks to prove that somebody hasn't lived in a house for fifty years. The other, so this seems to, this seems to take care of that. But the other thing is this, and I don't, I know when we start saying use common sense, but I'll give an example. I got a call from a gentleman that said, "I've got a." I've got a little cabin in my yard that is, that I, it's my place to watch TV, my ball game, and I have a little fridge there, and I put it. It's only saying why. He shouldn't have to pay a hundred and twenty more dollars for a little utility bill, whatever he is. He said a little cabin, I don't know what he is. But it's in, it's in his yard for trash. And I mean, that's just common sense. I think we have to look at some of these things when we go out and look at them with common sense. And I'd like to see if Ms. Hayes and her staff be doing that leeway.
Great point. And the real point I want to pull out is Ms. Hayes and her staff. Quite frankly, these are commissioners' calls. The assessor is the one that determines these things. And Ms. Hayes has been doing far above and beyond her long of work handling these. But these initial determinations, especially desktop, you know, we prefer that be done in the commissioner's office and not until Mike has to go out there and put his own eyeballs on it. And Ms. Hayes, Mike, Mr. Henderson doesn't necessarily have the same view into our zoning regulations, but what you just described to me is accessory use, just like a, not an apartment, a family room over a garage. That's an accessory use, even if it's detached from the primary dwell. Its purpose is not to have a family permanently. It's a man cave in your example, or a family room in the other. And the zoning ordinance does address accessory uses of that type. So hopefully, when we go out, we can bring that discretion to the table.
Dr. Miller? Just very quickly, I want to second what Mr. Blackstock said. Just yesterday, I was approached by a citizen who was very unhappy about the twenty-dollar assessment to prove the fact that there was a, oh, he has a property, actually, two properties that have been unoccupied since the forties. So. And this will take care of that. You know, I'm sitting here thinking in my mind, what are the, when you talk about the common sense aspect, and you prefaced that, there's huge good common sense. And I like doing that, but we have, I know, in my district, I have several friends that have gone out and built more than just a man cave. They got large families, so they, you know, they built these nice places to have all their children, grandchildren congregate there where if you want to walk home, which is too small to operate. So, you know, they would be a different category.
You live away and have that. We got a couple hundred.
Are you talking about just having parties there or get to go? I mean, I don't see why that would be.
And that could be an accessory to a trash fee because they don't live there. I mean, so.
Yeah, but they got all the utilities and everything. And I would argue the point that they should pay. And the reason I would argue the point is because.
We let you all do it.
Oh, well, they're not complaining. They'll pay their twenty dollars. Because, I mean, these are not quite on that scale. But if you, if you look at, for example, JR's place where he built, that started out as a bar.
But that's kind of commercial, what it means like business.
Well, not originally, when he first built. So, I mean, you know, we would just, it's common sense there.
But where does this stop? Where he, like, if they got boathouses down there, is that considered some to the fee? I mean, some of them they've just got.
Well, I mean, I had, I had somebody that lives up, not on Spitdown Lake, Leedsville, that was saying, man, I bet you I don't have six bags of trash in a year's time. But they got to pay the fee. You know, so, I mean, you know, it's going to be, it's just going to be some stuff. So, I mean, I think we're just going to work through it. It'll work out.
Greg doesn't have any children, but he helps make the payments. Hey, boy.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on that? All right. I'll, and please cast your votes. This is just to add it to the, tonight's, the motion carries unanimously. All right. We're down to closed session. Somebody, Mayden, you going to read this in closed session, please?
We also have seven. Do we have any business meeting discussion items tonight? Anybody want to talk about anything on the business thing? If not, I'll read the closed session. Your thing, the best method for you to get your information out is manage from the board supervisors tonight, okay? You don't have a forum to do what you need to do. All right. We have three closed sessions tonight. Eight A, B, and C. Eight A, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Legal authority, Virginia Code, Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A three. Subject matter, Pennsylvania County Solid Waste. Purpose, discussion of potential purchase of real property for additional convenience centers. Eight B, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority, Virginia Code, Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A five. Subject matter, project sensor. Purpose, discussion of unannounced prospective industry. Eight C, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Legal authority, Virginia Code, Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A eight. Subject matter, Ringgold East Industrial Park slash individual lot. Purpose, consultation with legal counsel regarding proposed letter of intent to purchase. I need a motion. So. And do it on your computers, Danny.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. All votes being passed, please pull the vote. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we're now back in open session at seven forty. We're doing certification. You hereby certify that we're in the closed session for only lawfully reasons identified in the motion to enter closed session. Anybody who believes we have deviated from the rules of Virginia Open Meetings Law or our agenda, please say so now. It'll be entered into the minutes. I'll now take a roll call. Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Farmer? All right.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis?